Six o'clock, so we'll call a meeting order. Everybody's here but Randy?
Randy is on the way.
Okay. We'll adopt the agenda.
Yeah, the only changes will be, I had forgotten at the football banquet tonight, so both Max and Mr. O'Line are gone today. So, I did put Max on there, I forgot about David.
(bell)
Oh, how about the young one?
So, we'll just take off number one out of the informational report. And that's it?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
I want to adopt the agenda.
I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. District 741 is proud of, we don't have anything underneath that.
(inaudible).
Public comment. It looks like there's anybody here for a public comment. Prove and correct the minutes from the October 25th, 2016 regular school board meeting, which was in your packet that was sent to you guys.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Move on to the financial reports. The October Treasury Report was in your packet. Bob, anything out of there?
Uh, no, really, nothing that is worth noting that we're not aware of.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasury Report.
So, I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Audit and approval of the bills. Cheryl.
I got a chance today to go in and check the bills. And everything, pretty much business as normal. I didn't notice some final payment was made for the band and choir Disney trip. I'm hoping they have a wonderful time.
They're very excited.
Oh, and they are. And the elementary school gym floor was pretty poor. And that looks lovely. That is a very nice, very nice vision. Otherwise, everything is pretty much normal business.
So, I would entertain a motion for the additional October's 2016 bill and the November 2016 bills. I got a motion from Lou.
I'll second it.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Consent agenda. We have one on there. Looks like we have a review and consider approval of modifying Brad Pence's junior high coaching position from the boys' junior highs basketball program to the girls' junior high basketball program for 2016-17 winter sports season.
I have nothing I can do but throw myself in the mercy of the board. I have no idea why with boys winning with the girls. So, I do apologize to the board, but it is, that correction does need to be heard.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Business. We have a few things underneath business. Again, anybody in the audience that has any questions, please raise your hands and I'll call on you for any questions that you might have. The first one is review and consider of a resolution candidacy and returns from the votes of school districts general election.
This is common practice when we have board elections or any other school special election. This really deals with the board, so the canvassing haven't just gives the results of it after everything's been turned in and checked. So, it just approves the new members and again, Bruce Sanderpool and Cheryl Rupp, Kala, is not coming back to us by choice. And our new board member will be Richard King. So, we do welcome him to the board and certainly I've been in contact with him and he's already set himself up for some things, so we're grateful to have him.
So, I'd entertain a motion for this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
So, I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second that.
Second from Kala. So, it's a resolution, so I think we decided to just continue doing the roll call.
I think you, the board has the right to do whatever they wish to do.
I think we'll just continue as we have in the past, so roll call.
Okay. Kala?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passed. Number two, review and consider approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of certification, certificates of general and, or of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties.
Again, this is a typical resolution after we've had an election that involves this board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussions? Then roll call, please.
Kala? Heidi? Mark?
Aye.
Heidi? Aye. Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl? Aye.
All right. I'd carry it.
Review and consider approval to add a sixth period class to David Wilkie as a Spanish teacher effective November 8th, 2016.
Yes, this is a new position and it really, his sixth position is really taking the position away from Amy Jo, Amy's Spanish class. So, he'll be taking one for Spanish class. The reason for this is that we had some, the needs of our students changed. We have a few new to country students and we need to give Amy Jo additional time to work with the schools. So, it's really just kind of a swing. Amy is losing a Spanish class. Mr. Wilkie is gaining a Spanish class and then Amy, that will free up time for Amy to work with some new to country students that we've had come into our district. It's really about the needs of our students.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
So, I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried.
Number four, review and consider approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, to add a middle level jazz band to Schedule C for the 2016-17 school year.
At the beginning of the year, we had talked, Laurie brought a proposal to me from Mr. Verran, hoping about starting a middle level jazz band. Both Laurie and I thought was really a great opportunity for our students. So, but the problem with this is that it was not on our Schedule C. All right, there is nothing at this time. So, in order for us to do it, and I did budget for this, in order for us to do it, we need to get a memorandum of understanding with MPa to say that it's okay for us to move forward and put it on the schedule for this year. At the end of this year, this does end because we are entering into negotiation year and then if we want to talk about that as a piece that we want to put permanently on our contract, then we would. So, this memorandum of standing is just for one year. I'd like to see all votes for there and how kind of numbers that it gets before we decide. And then again, as we negotiate into the next two-year contract, this will be something that will be discussed on whether we want to permanently put it onto our Schedule C. Both Laurie and Max stood, look at the number of hours that they'll be putting in and that's how we came up with a group on where this position would be put.
In all parties' favor.
All parties are buying with that. We think it's a great opportunity for our students.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion from Kala.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Then move on to personnel. We view and consider approval to hire David Somalia as a, as a 1FT English teacher effective November 16th, 2016.
As a reminder to the board, just before school started, we did get a late resignation of our English teacher. At that time, we didn't get a lot of applicants for the position and one of our applicants needed to finish up something to get the license. So, what we decided to do, the one that we wanted to offer the position to, has been subbing on and off in for that position as much as we can within our legal constraints until he finished the position. So, up until this point, David has been getting paid as a substitute teacher for us and he was a certified substitute teacher. He's now finished his licensure and now we're going to bring him on board as a certified teacher to finish the rest of the year. From everything that I'm hearing, he's doing an excellent job for us at this point.
It's a hard position to get into right away because you're behind April from the start.
It was just so late of a resignation and we felt that the staff member who resigned, it was important for that staff member to go to that other position that she had gotten. But it did make it a little bit more difficult for us to get a lot of applicants because we were lucky to get David and, you know, he's finished his teacher certificate on his licensure and he's doing a great job, so it's well worth it for us to hire him into the position. We were able to fill our other positions using other staff members that we currently have for our college courses, so it's worked out well so far.
So, what are, so as the school district, and obviously maybe this is more directed to Laurie, what are we doing to make him be able to succeed in this position because he is so far behind on April?
Right. From the get-go, we, and part of QCOM allows us to actually put in the position of having a in-subject mentor. So, Michelle Anderson is his mentor and Amy three, if not five, times a week in regards to, and she teaches seventh grade and then she also has, she teaches the ninth grade and then he goes to the tenth grade. So, they have been working both on curriculum as well as just teaching management as what you would with a first-year teacher. So, our staff member that left did leave very good notes and very good files as well. So, with the help of Michelle, it's been a good carry-through. The other thing is our English department, because of testing scores and it was their purchasing year, we had already finished our curriculum mapping, but they are still discussing all the testing scores and how they relate. So, they are actually doing a lot of staff development at this time in that regard. So, the support is there. He is all in and he has been working very, very hard and putting in a lot of hours, but we do have some good support for him this year, probably the best I've seen in the time I've been here because we haven't been able to support a mentorship, a true mentorship program. So, I feel very good about that.
And we've been lucky because he was willing to start as a sub in his work, pretty much with these two weeks up from the beginning of the school year. And we believe he's put in more time than a normal substitute teacher.
Oh, yeah. And that's great. I just make sure that he is comfortable and the kids are getting what they need to enroll in. All right.
I'll make a motion.
So, I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second that.
Second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried.
Review and consider approval to follow in targeted service assignment for the 2016-17 school year effective November 16th, 2016. Targeted service math and English, Janka Schultz, three hours per week.
We're going to start with that for our targeted service. Again, that doesn't come out of our general budget. We get additional dollars for targeted services. I think Laurie's also talked about finding ways to possibly increase our targeted services for the secondary school.
Make a motion to approve.
And motion from Lou.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Informational reports. We're going to move on to number two.
Yeah, the board, Matt or, Matt is going to fill us in a little bit on something that he and, and we can wait till your report, that, well, it's something that's going on and we're looking at for the elementary, but Matt can do it during his, or Max, Matt can do it during his report.
Okay. So, we'll start out with the secondary school principal report. Laurie, Laura.
Okay. And Kala, I'd like to thank you for serving on the board. It's been great to have you as part of our district and helping us along. Lots of different things have happened over the last couple of weeks. One, I do serve on the board of the Fond du Lac Community College, which is part of the HLC, the Higher Learning Community, which is right now engrossed in the new legislation with the new requirements for high school teachers teaching college classes. The Min State, which was previously known as Minskew, which is all the colleges in Minnesota, have filed for the exemption or the extension to give all our teachers until 2022 to complete the, the new requirements to be, which is 18 credits over and above their master's degree in their course subject area. With that, they are not very hopeful that it will go away, but there is one part of the legislation that has not been translated yet by the state, and that is current experience. So, there is still some hope that teachers that are currently teaching those courses will get grandfathered in, but they are not hanging their hats on that. So, right now, I'll be working with our staff. We have some time. That was kind of the biggest thing the Min State was pushing for was to get time for teachers to get certified if we need to. And I think as we work forward, it does look like we will be okay in, in all our subject areas. We may have to move some classes around in the end, but with the courses that we are currently offering, I think we will be, we will be sitting okay with the experience piece or not. Okay? So, that's kind of where that is at. Many of you may have been here for the Soup Sandwich and Song, which was a fundraiser for our Disney trip. If you had a chance, it was a wonderful concert that both the band put on in the gym as well as the choir concert in the auditorium. We also had both the middle school, high school Veterans Day program and then our principal advisory students went over and helped with the vets dinner, which was very enjoyable for...
So did you.
And so did I. It's one of my favorite activities during the year. It's really enjoyable to get out with the kids and, and serve the community and I think both sides bring back a lot from that experience. So, we are looking forward to parent-teacher conferences. We hope all our parents can make it out to touch base with our teachers and how their students are doing in class, as well as to hear a little bit from Garrett Grace, our integrationist, on looking ahead and what our technology plans are. So, and following conferences, we will be having a staff development day for half a day to work on some problem solving and teamwork and those kinds of things with the speaker that we have coming in. We did give the PSAT here in Painesville two weeks ago. So, that's one, it's a college test that is optional for students, more applicable for students that are looking at going to school on either coast. Most of our mid-state schools use the ACT, but it gives an option and it's kind of a practice test for that ACT that we give, or that we give later in the year. Then the last thing is I was also at our Dollars for Scholars meeting. We have four meetings a year. That's a group outside the school that provides, last year we provided 56 scholarships for graduating seniors. We did have a couple new businesses come on board during the year this year and we hope to be able, I think it was $20,000, $25,000 or something like that, that we gave in scholarship, something in that area. And we hope to be doing the same thing this year. So, John Janata is our treasurer for that group and there's about six to seven that serve on that committee. So, we hope to do the same. So, all that is good. One piece of news that hopefully we will have an answer for, but our leaders for our after-prom group, our, our parent leaders for that after-prom party for students have resigned. So, I am going to put out a notice following our meeting here tonight, looking for some parents to step up. If not, we may have a, a Plan B that our prom committee not to the same extent, but may do a program following. So, we'll find out.
How many people do you need?
Well, we need probably two or three lead center people to kind of bring everything together. We, we always are able to get a lot of people to help and do individual pieces, but it's having those couple core people. And that's, it's a lot of work and our parents have on, every year have really stepped up and done a great job for our students, but just kind of looking for, for those people again. So, I'll be putting out an email, you'll see that goes out to all students, parents. Okay? Any questions that you might have?
I thought it was really great, students helping out Veterans Day. That was neat. They did a really good job.
They do do a good job and they really enjoy it. They look forward to it. They ask me at the beginning of the school year, do we get to do that again? So, it's been a great connection for our students and, and our community.
We fully appreciate it, yeah.
So, yeah. And appreciative of the Legion. They serve a nice dinner every time too, so it's great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Number three, administrative negotiation report. Bruce?
Thank you. Well, we met again this morning. We are, we believe we are there. We're just checking with legal counsel just to make sure we have it right and we hope to have something to present to the board for first meeting in December, which will obviously come out in our packets early, right Bob?
Correct. Good. Good job. Number four, community head director.
Matt DeKels. Good evening. As Bob said, I'm going to report a little bit for David. To David, the Early Childhood Staff and I have been looking into a three-year-old preschool program, actually to start maybe even at the new year, depending on if they can find a qualified candidate. The Early Childhood Staff has really seen a need for an inclusive, inclusive program for three-year-olds and have been working with parents and in the process. So, we're going to meet Thursday to kind of finalize the details and then he's going to get that job posted shortly thereafter. So, Fitness Center news, we've got quite a bit going into the new year here. To help combat some of the negative health and wellness trends with our youth, we've are now offering a free Fitness Center membership for all students, ninth through 12th grade. They don't, no longer have to be just out for a sport, is how we had it in the past. So, any student can utilize the Fitness Center, ninth through 12th grade during staffed hours, which are 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And we did update our staffed hours. We have done a, you know, we always evaluate our usage and we've been averaging about six to seven people from that 6:00 to 8:00 AM timeframe. So, we did reduce those. We're no longer staffed during that time and we use that, we're investing that back in more classes, equipment, and being able to offer, you know, Fitness Center memberships to all students. And with that, we're excited to about the launch of our 10-round HIT cardio kickboxing classes. And that HIT stands for High Intensity Interval Training. So, we've added an area back kind of in our, what we like to call our group exercise area. It's kind of a hallway area, but we've added some heavy bags, some reaction bags, speed bags. So, it's going to be a cardio kickboxing circuit that we've already kind of started working on finalizing that class. Your new brochure, the Winter 2017 brochure should be in your mailbox this Friday or Saturday with quite a few new activities. And POS hit a milestone. We just passed 80 kids now in our school age program. So, any questions for me?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number five, technology committee report. I'm going to defer it to Jonah and Garrett.
So, we've been busy. First off, I'll start with what Laurie left on talking about. So, the conferences this week will be doing informational meetings with our middle school and high school parents. So, what will happen is I will be in here and at the top and bottom of every hour. So, every half hour, I will be doing kind of a 15-minute informational meeting with what we have going on and then allow for 15 minutes of kind of question and answer. At the same time, we'll have Chromebooks set up so they're able to take a survey so we can gather some information from our parents.
What does that mean, just to clear, I think the board probably knows what you're talking about, but that is an initiative that we've talked about.
Yep. So, what I'll be presenting on is kind of our, our plan going forward with looking at a one-to-one possibly starting next year. So, through that informational meeting, we'll kind of gather some data that we're looking for from parents that we're wondering about in regard to some of the, the pieces that we need to put in place. And so, I'll be able to present on that at that time. And so, also going forward, we're ordering two devices. They're a kind of same Chromebook you're using except they're a flip screen, so the screen can flip over and we can use it as a tablet also. The goal of that is we're going to pilot it between now and the January school board meeting to see if we do go this one-to-one route and we order devices for teachers, that would be a different device we would order because that would substitute for our smartboards possibly in the future. As our smartboards get older, we have to have something ready in place for that. So, rather than order them a Chromebook and then an iPad and all these other pieces, we're trying to simplify that as much as possible and take care of it in a financially responsible way. And so, this is kind of what we've come up with. So, other than that, we don't really have, you know, obviously, we don't really have a lot. We have a lot, but it's kind of focused around that right now.
Yeah. I do want to make sure the community understands that we're looking at this initiative, but all we're doing right now is looking at it. We need to get much more information to the community and get some, get more of our ducks in a row before we were to come to the board and say this is really something that we're recommending that we're going to do and certainly will be done through the technology committee.
Any questions for either of us?
I know a lot, a lot had, we talked a lot about how we would present this year to any, you know, to, to the public and stuff. And I think one of the, one of the neat things were when we did some surveys of how many people have Internet connections and stuff at home, we were really pleasantly surprised that there is a lot of that already in place. So, if we do go to the one-to-one initiative, some of those angst that we might be thinking about probably aren't going to be there as much, but we are going to be definitely getting input from the parents. We're going to have a lot of information for them to, you know, to ask the questions of how we're going to do it. You know, are they going to keep the Chromebooks for over the summer months? You know, so there's all kinds of, you know, logistics that goes on with setting a one-to-one initiative. And so, we're just starting with some of those conversations and getting the, the feedback from the, from the parents themselves. And then we will go to the public at some point in time before we even decide that's what we're going to go with and then have more informational meetings and seeing if there's anything else that we might be missing. So, more to come. This is just basically kind of the very first step and we thought had conferences was probably the best way to hit the most people and their children at one time. And with Garrett willing to put a presentation, a small presentation together for the parents just to give them some idea what this might look like in the future, because I think we all know that the future is technology and how is this going to work in our buildings? How is it going to work at home? Who's responsible for this and how we can do this here fiscally responsible? And how we can do this here fiscally responsible for the district, so.
Does the survey show that that is helpful? Is it very clear that the one-to-one initiative is going to streamline and make the kids' education better? Or are we just filling a bill that looks like just a techie thing?
Two pieces to it. One, you replace a lot of the other components that are there. For example, physical textbooks. A lot of the companies now offer digital curriculum. Those have a lot more content embedded in it. Those might be videos. It might be language translations. It might be assessments built right into the textbook. So it's no longer just this book that you open, you read from end to end and you're done. There's a lot of activities built into that. The other part of it is student engagement. So through the device, you're also engaging students in a different way with that material and that content. And we already do this with a lot of our stuff in this building. If we took the amount of labs we have and the amount of carts we have, K through 12, we already have a lot of devices. We're just kind of putting in a different model. So going away from the lab model as much to more of the one-to-one. So right away will a lot change, not necessarily, but the, having the option of that device in that backpack where the teacher can have all the students pull it out, it'll be there for them to use.
So will we see the textbooks go away? Is that what the end result of this is?
The end result could be some of that eliminated. We'll have to take a look at each individual curricular area, have discussions about the benefits. Certainly, I believe some will go away. Another thing that this does is level the playing field to some degree, because some of our students have access to very good technology. Some of our students don't have access to really any technology. So this does get technology in all their hands. I have been resistant to a one-to-one ever since it came out, because I wanted our staff to be ready for it and the district to be ready for it before we go down that road. I think one of the discussions that we've had in our technology committee that this is the right time to start this discussion. It would be different if we were coming to the board saying, "You know, we're going to do this." No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying, "We're coming to the board. This is what we're looking at doing. The technology committee is recommending that we look at this. Now we need to approach the parents, because there are some pieces they need to be aware of, even our students." So there's a lot of information that we need to get out and also collect from all of our community members.
So if we went ahead with this, would it mean someday that we'd get rid of some of the dinosaur computer style and they would use these? And therefore, can they take the MCA tests on this? Or how do you handle that?
Yes. So testing is perfectly compatible with these. They've had great luck with them. Actually, our elementary with their testing this year is using all the Chromebooks. Because these are, well, from a management side. Jonah, if you want to speak on that?
Chromebooks are a lot more easier to manage on our side of things with all the behind-the-scenes things we do with our network. For example, with computer labs, Jim and I had to go through each of them, touch them individually to put Windows 10 on them. These Chromebooks update themselves. I can manage them all through the Internet. I don't need to touch them at all. Whereas physical PCs like this, we have to go around each and every one of them at least once.
So we'll see the capital expenditure for those disappear. These will come in.
And you can get these for a lot cheaper than a desktop that's a standard.
So Bruce, an example, Jonah and I went and toured Alexandria. They've added, or they've taken away a lot of their PCs. They've added 1,200 devices in the past year, and they have an increased staff in the tech support area by any, just because these are so much easier to manage. So a lot of schools are looking at this option. You know, our computer labs, those are about $800 a computer. These are about $200. And so fiscally, it makes a lot more sense. Five years ago, that was a different conversation, because the computers, we needed that to run a lot of the programs. Now all of the programs, most of the programs are web-based, so this device can run that. It doesn't mean we're getting rid of all of the labs, because Project Lead the Way still needs high-powered labs for some of their programs.
That would be understandable.
But over the next five years, that could change, too. We don't know exactly, but where we are in this day and age with technology, this is the best device that we have to offer.
So what kind of a lifetime do these have for the changeover? You have like this six or seven-year cycle or whatever you're doing?
Yep. So these are on a, they're guaranteed for five years. Basically, Chrome, or Google will keep updating and supporting them for five years. The cycle that we would put them on is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade would have them for three years. Ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth would have a new device for those four years, because the middle schoolers are rougher on the devices. We made those numbers up based on what all the other schools are doing, because obviously, we're not the first school to go this route. And so you'd get three years out of a device at the middle level, four at the high school. When we get those devices back, we've also talked about that. There's about five different options, you know, selling them, donating, whatever. We have all sorts of repurposing options that we still need to figure out. And we're in the early stages with all this. So all of these are conversations that we have. None of this is set in stone. This is how we're doing it. It's just these conversations that we're having to start with. And before I forget, I do want to add, we have surveyed staff about this to see how our staff feels about it. 100% of our staff are willing to do this. So they're willing to put forth the effort to do this. So we wanted to make sure we have staff support from this. It was around 85% that felt like they were ready for this. So, meaning more wanted training. All wanted more training. But there were some that said, "Yeah, if it was here tomorrow, I would be just fine." But not all of them were. But all of them were willing to make this leap.
And if we didn't have Garrett to help support, particularly our teachers, as we bring this piece on, we wouldn't be talking about this right now.
So when this takes place, would those Chromebook things disappear eventually?
The computer labs?
Yeah, well, you have some kind of a book that wasn't really like-
An iPad?
iPads?
Yeah, that may, that's why I was, yeah, I knew there was something around here that would-
So we have an iPad cart here in the high school, and we have one iPad, or a couple iPad carts in the elementary school. The iPads can run some different features that these can't run. Some of the multimedia stuff, some of the music and choir recording apps that these can't-
So you still have some of that also?
And we still have those. You know, we don't need to update those at all currently. And so we'd still have those around.
And some of that, like that technology down in the elementary, that's, would be just fine for them to do what they need to do and function as a day. Where up at the high school, you need a little bit more robust and different programs to write papers and research and all that other good stuff. So that's why this becomes a great tool for them.
Well, I know at the school board meeting, some of the schools just brag about this one-to-one thing. And I didn't know if they were just spending a whole bunch of money or if it really came down to a better education for the kids.
And I think we've met and talked about the financial logistics of this. And numbers-wise, the budget works in favor of this at this time. Just for all these programs going web-based now, this is a more logical solution for what we have out there five years from now, 10 years from now. We don't know what that looks like yet, but we can't necessarily plan for that, especially around technology.
And technology is what these kids are used to.
Yep. Well, you go, I mean, Jonah, you're in college right now. Look at what he's got in front of him. And I'm sure that's his, everything that he does in school is off of that. I know my son is the same way. I mean, he brings his computer tablet home, and that's where he sits and works on every day. And so if we can give and start exposing our children to that type of work ethic and how, because it's a different way of looking at stuff, looking on a computer and trying to do your work than paper and pencil and stuff like that. And if we can get them a leg up on that, boy, that's just kudos to everybody, I think.
So there'll be a lot more to come. Obviously, nothing is set in stone. We have a lot, a lot of meetings to still go, a lot of community input. So you'll be seeing plenty of us over the next year, whether you like it or not.
Yeah, we like it.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff development report. Heidi Riley.
A pretty short meeting, more of a review. But again, talking about the staff recognition that will take place at the Chamber banquet. So getting those nomination forms out to the staff so they can start completing them and getting them back. And, and then just a little bit talking about the Q comp, the peer review, making sure that the staff is getting the training that they need for that.
And I think we talked a little bit about the one-to-one, just to mention that if we do go down this road, you know, more staff development will be needed in those areas for, to make sure that our teachers are able to work with those, the new technology to help and work with our students.
All right. You get the next one again, Heidi, the wellness committee?
And I'll kind of take this one. What has happened is that we've had a health and safety committee, and we've had kind of an inactive wellness committee. And we always want to look ways of kind of reducing the number of meetings that we have. So at this point, what we've decided to do is combine our health and safety committee and our wellness committee. So we've kind of expanded the committee so that we have more members of it. We do need to do some work on the wellness policy, and I'm going to be doing that. But we've also, we're looking at making the committee more informational for our, for our staff. So that for health and safety, we send out reminders to health and, you know, to our staff that says, "Remember, it's winter. Don't wear high heels, you know, slide," rather than, you know, take, you know, three trips instead of just packing everything into one. You know, because when I started here, we were paying over $100,000 for our workman's comp, and we're down $40,000 at this point. So we've made some great advances in this, but we need to keep that up. And our wellness, same thing. You know, if we have healthy teachers, they don't miss as many days, and that's better educational for our students. So we're looking at that. And we're also just in the early stages. We do get some money from the Southwest Co-op, where we get our insurance, health insurance from, to start running a health or a wellness program. So there, we have a group of staff members who are looking at that right now, putting something together. And as they get it together, we'll continue to update the board on that. But we're excited about this, you know, incentives to do more activities. It just hasn't been decided yet what we're going to do. So I think this will be a much better functioning committee than one or the other. So we're excited.
Number eight, World's Best Workforce Report.
So we had, we had our World's Best Workforce Report. It was kind of, or meeting, it was kind of interesting, because we, it's a broad base of people that are there. So it's interesting with all the different things that come up. But Don is, brought us through the report that we did last year, brought us through a fair amount of things that would come out this year.